Welcome to Council meeting for Thursday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one. The time is seven oh one. I call to order this meeting for the Rockup. We have all seven council members present and we have a call. The first item is public forum. If then anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on any items other than personnel or legal matters or items on the agenda, you may please come forward. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber. Erica, anyone raising their hands?
No, sir.
No hands raised, so I am going to close the public forum. Council, with your permission, I'd like to make a change in the sequence of tonight's agenda. I'd like you to take the executive session first. The reason being, the executive session is about first is about section five fifty one dot O seven for personnel matters, municipal court judge. We have two people lined up to talk tonight, talk to tonight, but they have schedule constraints with that. I'm going to give permission. I could ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session. Section five fifty nine O seven for personal matters.
I'll make a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to chapter five fifty one, subchapter D of the Texas Government Code.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to recess into executive session and seconded by Ms. Elrich. All in favor, signify. Or opposed, motion passed seven oh and the time is seven oh two and we are in executive session.
Okay, now the time is seven fifty-eight. We can, we are back in regular session. Counsel, is there any, is there a motion out of the executive session?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to appoint Shayna Primo as our municipal judge for the town of Sunnyvale.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, second by Mr. Clark to appoint Shayna Primo as the municipal judge of town of Sunnyvale. Everyone heard the motion? Other than discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven oh. Shayna, congratulations if you're listening to it. Okay, council, we are back in our regular session. Council, we have three items tonight. Susan indicated to me that before we can approve the budget, which is the item number one, or before we adopt the annual budget of the town of Sunnyvale, we need to agree upon the tax rate. Because tax rate decides, determines the revenue and obviously everything else associated with it. So if Charles, Mr. Anderson, so we can start discussing item number one, but how do we go ahead with this? But we don't, I don't think council has agreed upon a tax rate yet. What's your recommendations?
Well, the tax rate is part of the whole process and we want two readings. And so at some point tonight, we need to decide that. It would be my recommendation to you.
Right, so what our thought was is that you have your discussion and make your decision on the tax rate because that is going to determine the budget. But we have to do the, my understanding is we have to do the order, we have to adopt the budget and then, then we can move on to levying and adopting the tax rate, but we must adopt the budget first. But you can't adopt the budget if you don't know what your tax rate is. And so I think my suggestion would be we have two PowerPoints. We have one on the budget and we have one on the tax rate. And my suggestion is you let Sheri present the presentation on the tax rate so we can have that discussion, make your decision and then we can go through with the formal voting on each of the three items.
So the, does either of them need to be super majority or a four-three vote is good enough?
Yeah, it says sixty percent four-three. It's a four-three vote, it's fine.
Okay, sixty percent, that's six times seven is forty-two.
Round down.
Round down, okay. It's math. Okay, so with that, item number one, discuss, consider and act upon the second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty of the town of Sunnyvale, town council of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas, making appropriation for the support of the town of Sunnyvale for the fiscal year beginning October one twenty twenty-one and ending September thirty twenty twenty-two and adopting the annual budget of the town of Sunnyvale for the twenty twenty-one twenty twenty-two fiscal year. Ms. Sheri, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. If you would go ahead and go to the second slide, we will, we'll get into the discussion about the tax rate. That's our schedule that we've been showing you at every meeting where we are. And tonight we will have that first reading, but before we get to that part, we need to have the tax rate discussion. So if you look at the next slide, our current tax rate, as you know, is point four five six seven. The rate that we published as the proposed tax rate was that same current rate. Last, from last Monday, the rate utilized in that proposed budget was the same current rate. Next slide please. So looking at that, the published tax rate point four five six seven would give you revenue of six point six six four. Leaving the tax rate flat will provide an additional two hundred and twenty-one thousand five seventy-seven. And of course, that would be put in a non-departmental line item for the council to have approved projects. The proposed budget tax rate from last Monday was point four four nine three zero four. That will give you the revenue of six point five five four. And then with that extra revenue of a hundred and ten thousand eight oh nine, we would again put that amount into the council-approved projects line item. And then for an option between the two, we came up with the rate of point four five three zero, which equals six point six oh eight mil. And again, we would put that amount into the one six six one three eight into the council-approved projects. So let's look at some of the tax rate scenarios and look at it from the resident's perspective.
Thank you, just, just for a second. Okay, thank you.
The tax rate at point four five six seven would be no increase from the prior year, but you need to note that if the values increase, the taxes due will increase. But the tax rate would still stay flat for the town. So based on some scenarios with the value staying flat, I used four hundred thousand because D-CAD has it as the average home value of four oh six. So based on the value staying flat at four hundred thousand, at point four four nine three, the taxes would be approximately one hundred, one thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. That's a decrease of twenty-nine dollars and sixty cents from the current tax rate. Then if you look at the point four five three zero, which is the other option that we have thrown out before you, the taxes would be one thousand eight twelve and that would be a decrease of fourteen dollars and eighty cents from the current tax rate. And again, those are approximates because you know there are other exemptions involved. Next, please. So what we need from you tonight, counsel, is to give us direction on which of these tax rates that you would prefer for your proposed tax rate. And then we can make a decision going forward with on that budget.
Thank you, Ms. Sheri. I need to open for public comments, right? Okay. Let me invite public to come forward. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, item number one, you may, you may do so at this time. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Now, when he's coming forward from the chamber, Erica, anyone raising their hands?
No, sir.
No hands raised, we are going to close the public comments on item number one. Counsel, time for discussions.
All right, so.
Mr. Freeman? So as I understood it, what we put on this agenda is the flat rate of point four five six seven and what we discussed in last meeting was the rate of point four four nine three. You know, through kind of looking around and seeing the cost that we might have to bring on for additional public safety, I think that we should, we should discuss it in further detail. You know, as we look at it, the, the number was what, a hundred and ten thousand of additional revenue at the four four nine three? And you know, that was a compromise from the rates that we had before. The rates we had before, there was going to be a no new revenue rate and there was going to be a flat rate. And we basically picked that rate because it was kind of right. That was when we were under the understanding that, you know, we were just going to see if the safer grant went through on some additional public safety people. And I think as, as the times gone by, we've seen that there are more and more times where we might actually need those and maybe can't wait for safer grant. So this new, this new rate, this forty-five thirty rate, I think, is kind of another compromise. I mean, I, I do like the idea of trying to lower taxes if we can. And so this would still accomplish that. It's fifteen dollars, it's fifteen dollars for the year and it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but you know, that's a, it's a cup of coffee here and there throughout the year that you'd be able to get that you, you wouldn't have before. With that new rate, we pick up sixty-five percent of the cost for those new employees. And I think that as, you know, being able to further provide additional services in the form of public safety, as well as provide our citizens with a bit of a tax break as well, I think is something that we should greatly consider.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Additional comments?
You know, thank you, Councilmember Freeman. You know, as, as I mentioned last, last Monday, just a few days ago, you know, I, I do have concerns about decreasing the tax rate a lot, basically just because the challenges we have, we have a lot of, lot of things in the pipeline. We have some public safety, fire members that we're, we're looking at, try to expand, police officers, you know, potentially expand. Also, we have a lot of projects, roads, other things that we need to, to look at. So another big factor is inflation, you know, the cost of everything is going up. And I, I don't know if inflation is going to slow back down right now, it may be with us for a while. So my also, my other concern is that we are putting ourselves in that place for the future. And so I want us to be fiscally responsible, you know. But I, I, I think I am comfortable with this, this middle ground, this point four five three oh, that still gives us a tax break, but still I think puts us in a pretty good position, you know, moving forward. So I think that's where we're really right now.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Additional comments? Thank you, Mr. Clark. Additional comments or discussions? Mayor, Mr. Finch?
Agree with both parties. I think we're, I think we just need to be wise with and be aware of the things we don't know. And we, although we do know, there are expenses coming. And so I tend to agree with the middle ground. It's a big compromise. We'll have, still have some hard decisions to make if we don't get safer. I think we should be prepared for that. If we hopefully Susan's very conservative in her estimates, and we have that extra coming in. I think we should be prepared to take a hard look at that when it comes time to looking at public safety. And I've said that before. And I think that's, we're having to get a decision on that regardless of what we do with this tax rate. We're just going, we're now deciding how we're going to pay for that.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Additional discussions or comments? Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry I hadn't been here for the last month, but I've been able to listen online. And I'll say this, our councilmen have had great insight on all of these topics, great perspective. And I think there's advantages to all of these numbers. And I don't think at the end of the day, two dollars a month, one dollar a month, or four dollars a month is going to impact our residents one way or the other. What I am concerned about for the optics of our town is that for the last three years, we were concerned, concerned about growth, then we were concerned about COVID, and now we're concerned about the potential of inflation, which is probably going to happen. But each of the last three years, we finished well above the projected numbers that we started with. And at some point, I think the council has to come to grips with are we just raising money to raise money, or we cover an exact cost? And I think that's something that we have to answer. And I don't know if we have to answer tonight. But I heard that in some form or fashion from almost everybody, to be cost conscientious of what we're doing with our money. And I don't think it's our job as a council just to collect money in the reserves just so we have money. So I could live almost with any of these numbers. But as long as we're financially responsible with our town and the management of our town, which we are, then I think we're going to support probably any of these numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Additional comments or discussions on this topic? Mayor?
Ms. Egan? I just want to say that my position has not changed from Monday night. I agree with I shouldn't say I agree. We shouldn't be raising money to raise money just because we can't. But like I said the other night, I think there's still going to be some snakes in the grass. Inflation being one of them. There, you know, every year I've been on council, we've struggled to mediate, but also at the same time. And we've done a very good job. Both town manager, previous financial, current financial. I hate to be sexist, but these ladies do an awesome, awesome job at keeping up. But this only turns out to be on a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. If you don't take into consideration homesteading, excuse me for wearing sunglasses, but I didn't bring my record glasses. But man. But you're talking thirty dollars a month, or thirty dollars a year. Thirty dollars a year. People waste more gas going up and down Barnes-Bribe forty-eight times a day. I, I know there's a lot of coffee drank, and I'm glad that it is because Hope Coffee's doing pretty good. I was actually there to that. And, you know, I don't think the ocean's going to get any fuller or any less full by our staying at four, five, six, seven. I, I, you know, it's, it's basically five reserve days. When you look at our tax rate relative to all the other, the municipalities in Dallas County, and I've got the chart here. We're among the lowest. You look at Mesquite, you look at Garland, which are the nearby neighbors. They're almost one and a half times what our tax rate is. We, this town went for thirty years and didn't take care of the infrastructure needs that we needed to take care of. Now, a hundred and ten thousand dollars or two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, depending on the tax rate number that you use, isn't going to put it in a new road. It might put in about five feet of a new road, but it's five feet more than we have now. And I know members of this current council are always complaining about, why aren't we fixing these roads? We put the DOMAIC together. We've got the CIP plans put together. What could we have done with that additional money? To go down the road. It's not going to kill any of the residents of this town. There has not been one person show up tonight or any of the previous meetings that we had. They said, don't raise my taxes. And people are always going to say, although no one showed up. People are always going to say, my taxes are too high. We're not changing the taxes. We're not changing the rate if we hold four, five, six, seven. No one's shown up on Zoom calls. No one's shown up in chambers. I've not gotten any phone calls or emails. I don't know about the rest of you guys. But then when you have a discussion with somebody about it and say it's thirty dollars a month on a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. It's kind of like, really? Y'all are thinking about changing the tax rate? I don't think this change of point zero, zero, seven, three on the four, four, nine, three, oh, nothing. That's nothing. Seven tenths of one cent per hundred dollars of valuation. So I'm, I'm where I was the other night. I'm, I'm four, five, six, seven. We can change it next year. If we find all of a sudden we've got two hundred reserve days, which as y'all know, I keep wanting to beat down and needs to be beat down and agree with the logic. You don't spend reserve days on you don't depend on that money to pay salaries because that, once that person's hired, that, that's a continuation. But there are things that we can do. And there are things that we can do that the town has avoided. Sewer line on trip road. Various different infrastructure project needs. No, a hundred and ten thousand dollars isn't going to get it very far. Two-twenty is not. But it's a, it's, it's where to work from, and I've not gotten, heard anybody complain about. So with that, I'll, I'll tell you, that's, that's where my votes.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Mr. Eldred?
Yeah, I'll keep it short. Thanks, everybody, for staying late again this week. We appreciate it. You know, in security, we have a saying, we don't worry about threats we do know about, we worry about things we don't know about, right? And I think this extra money is going to help us with the things that we don't know about, right? Because we already have a long list of things that we know about, and we're worried about that already. So I think we're going to need the extra cushion to, you know, support us through these times when the things pop up that we're not planning for. Believe it that.
Mr. Eldred, thank you very much. So let me start from, I, I could have a different position here. I think I said that early enough. Let me start where Mr. Eldred said is absolutely right. We prepare for the contingency we plan and cushion. If you know, the charter says, we need ninety days of working capital, the reserve. That's exactly the reason, planning for the uncertainty. Because, you know, past may not be the indication of the future. But as a council, as a body, as a responsible body, we decided to keep hundred and twenty days of more conservative than used to be. And Mr. Egan talked about the investments being made on the infrastructure. He's absolutely right. They can agree, a lot of credit to this council. A lot of kudos. You took the tough decisions. You focused strategically on infrastructure improvement. We are building the Collins Road. The water lines are getting changed, sewer issues are getting fixed. Roads, we looked at the entire road system in town. Very strategically using a Six Sigma principle and Demi principle. Saub did a very good job coming with that. And when we did not have money, and I want to be allocated three point four million dollars. Last year, mid-year, November timeframe, when we talked about it, we said, where do we find the money? We've got all this excess reserve, about hundred and twenty days. We brought that down. We allocated the money. One question I remember asking is, if we can find more money, can we finish this route earlier? The answer was not, because we have X number of staff and X number of resources. So we can, even if the money is there, we can only execute it certainly, which is fair. Unless we go want to hire more people. So the idea that if you pump more money into the infrastructure, more things can happen this year, I don't think so. It's going to take time because we have X amount of staff, X amount of resources. So for me, adding more money, we need to fund it appropriately at the right level to keep the projects going. But everything is not going to get fixed in one year. So I said this one, we talked about the charter required ninety days of safety deposit or security in the blanket. Council chose to hundred and twenty days, extremely twenty-five percent more conservative. So I asked, I think we talked last meeting, I asked Ms. Guthrie for, where do we predict or forecast will end up in two weeks, end of the year, September that year? Again, she told me that, Mayor, the numbers are still coming in, so I'm not exactly sure. But she said, at least, at least we will have a million dollar over hundred and twenty-four days. That's a million dollar over hundred and twenty-four days. Remember, November, we drained that down to one twenty. So this is in an year where we are unprecedented pandemic, which hopefully none of us will outlive the one of them. So many uncertainties in sales tax, constructions, issues, expenses. On a situation where we did not know how the SB two will affect us. Last year, I remember talking about, I remember we had all these investments in capital and staff was concerned about the tax rate. So there was discussion about increasing the tax rate, but this council had the position and said, no. Even with this speed, even with the COVID, we have, with all this capital improvement, we are still going to hold. We do the right thing. Time tells us we do the right thing. We are able to allocate so much more money into the capital and still grow our actual million dollar of the one twenty. Then if we adopt the point four, four, nine, two. So if I add the one point oh seven six and the hundred and twenty days, which is, we want to keep is two million dollars, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand two sixty, five hundred and sixty dollars. That is, remember, that number is based on, that's a burn rate, as you know. It takes certain dollars to maintain and run the town operations. I believe at the twenty-four thousand dollar maybe seventies, twenty-four thousand seventy, twenty-four thousand dollars rate, burn rate for hundred and twenty. We will add two point eight, eight, one million dollars, a hundred and twenty. But we have another million of million and seventy-six thousand dollars in top. So that leaves us at the end of this September. We will have three million nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars, three, nine, five, seven, six, eight. Now let's look at the going forward. And again, I appreciate staff for being conservative. Last year, our sales tax was a quarter with everything shutting down and things happening. If I look at twenty twenty-two going forward, I think COVID is well behind, at least just look around the traffic on the road and businesses in restaurants and other places. We've got a new Whataburger. Cheek Filet is going to ground break, or I should say, open on October sixth. This place right next to it, Derek Salces's place, I think, if I remember correctly, he's, he has twenty-two offices. He's, twenty-one is already taken. Yes, I fully understand that all of them are not sales tax younger teams, right? But Hop Coffee is popping. We've got, that's the Tullus areas coming up. There's a wedding menu we just approved. We got distribution centers. We have, one was approved last year and it should be popping. We just approved one for the second one. Construction everywhere. Construction means sales tax. If the material is purchased from the town, that's it. But we know, and we've got, don't forget the, the big sixty-acre sports complex coming up on the land. So in my simple mind, sales tax is going to be, I anticipate, let me put this way, I anticipate sales tax position to be much better than last year. So and the number of permits. Staff conservatively, conservatively estimated, but I know development's coming up. Again, if the history is right, from November to now, we have a million dollar extra. But this year, I estimate, I believe, our sales tax dollars are going to be much higher than we used to last year. And some of the numbers. So now with that, I think our numbers are extremely conservative, even with that extreme conservatism. We will still have a four million dollars left in the fund that. There's only so much capital improvement town can carry out. Stop, that's all stuff we have. Unless this council is going to go hire more people. If that's what you want, let's do it. But that's not, we approved every single supplement. For me, I believe in this one. I don't believe that the council just because we can raise the tax, just because we can keep the tax, we should do it. I think there's plenty of money. Plenty of conservatism built into the revenue estimates. I believe when we can return the money to citizens, we should. I ask the question, if not this year, when? With that, I, I think I told you this one, I will not support the point four, five, six, seven. I'm not even going to support that point four, five, three. I, I want really, we, we talked about this one, but didn't do a takeaway. We talked about helping our senior citizen with the fixed income. We talked about increasing their assumption, but right now we have a sixty-five thousand dollar assumption. And Susan sent some information today, and then I, I'm loving this data. She sent us the data from all of Texas, all of Dallas County, I should say. Every city, how their homestead works. Addison, optional homes to twenty thousand, twenty percent eight, then fifty thousand for age sixteen, fifteen. Sunnyvale, zero percent of homestead, sixty percent. And if you just keep looking at it, I won't even talk about university park, that may be completely out of the ballpark. It's a one point six million dollar property. There's sixty-five eight, it's four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. That may be not our ballpark. So we talked about adding, increasing the exemption for seniors. We didn't do it. We didn't get there. I fully anticipate that I'm, I'm going to ask the staff to work on that and come back with some scenarios, except to council approve it. With all that said, we have money. We have more so than we had before. We, I anticipate more sales tax to come through. So I cannot prove, and I will not support in sales tax rate higher than point four, four, nine, two. Again, like I said, there are seven votes here. One doesn't count. Four will work. So feel free to vote anywhere you want. I just want to make sure that I'm very clear about where I stand. Ms. Egan?
You said we got four million dollars? Then let's change the tax rate to eat up the four million dollars or the two million dollars. All we're doing is changing the tax rate to at most take two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Totally agree with you. We don't need to keep taxpayers' money. Totally agree with you. We don't need to keep taxpayers' money. But taxpayers are not up here beating on the doors. They might be to y'all personally, I've not had. That doesn't mean that it doesn't happen, but we don't see it happen. So if we're going to change the tax rate, seven-tenths of one percent is not a change in tax rate. If we've got two million dollars left over, we've got four million dollars left over, then let's change the tax rate. But not for seven-tenths of one cent.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Additional comments or discussions?
Mr. Clark? I am interested actually in, in, uh, what you're mentioning about, um, some further exemptions for sixty-five and over, or something. You know, I, I would like to hear more. Obviously, we can't do that tonight. But definitely would like to, uh, you know, investigate more about what, what types of exemptions there are. And if we did create a new exemption, um, and it's related to, obviously, our taxes, how would that take effect? Is that a normal type of, uh, like, can we do it any time of year? Do we have to wait till the next tax season or what? Maybe our talent attorney to weigh in. Normally, you would do it during the tax season, and to give you a precise answer, I'll have to get back with you, but the budget is built on the taxes number. So thi- this is the proper time to consider. Then it's the, yeah.
Well, but can I say something, and maybe this will jog a little something with Mr. Anderson? Although he's smarter than I am, but, um, tax statements go out first of October. So any exemption for helping out the elderly or the seniors in our town, we can talk about that for the next year. And it would apply to twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three taxes. This is, if I, if I got my stereo right there, okay? It would be the next budget that any help that we would be giving the seniors or elderly would apply to. Because we've, we've got basically the next nine months to have that conversation. It would not apply to what we're doing now. I'm all for doing it. We could even take part of that reserve that we're talking about and go ahead and pump some of that money to them right now, although I don't think that's totally legal.
It just, I want to make sure, because I know people might be watching at home. If you guys could allow me just to clarify the amount of excess reserves, okay? So at the end of this fiscal year, our estimate is that we will have our hundred and twenty days that you all have, you know, said that's our policy. And, and the extra amount is one million seventy-six thousand dollars. So it's not four million, it's not three million. I just want to make sure the public's not going, what are they doing with all that money? And, and I think I've been saying that number pretty consistently throughout the budget process. And I've always said, my recommendation is in November, because we, we don't assume that number till the books close. And they don't normally close till November, because, you know, we're getting new rules in. That at that point, we always come back to you, we do rollovers, and we tell you what your excess reserves are. I estimate that's what it will be. And at that time, I ask you to allocate it for expenditures unless we have something in the future. So I've been saying pretty consistently, I think we should use this for street maintenance or to do a capital project that's needed. So I just want to make sure that nothing's really, has not changed. I think we've been consistent about this money is going to be there and that that's what most cities do. When you have excess reserves, you do it a one-time or a capital expenditure. We do have some needs that have cropped up in the last couple of months in public works, some equipment, some things like that. We're working on putting that proposal together that we'll bring to you in November for use of the excess reserves. And, you know, this last year, we took it down to one-twenty. We took all the extra money, we put it in the DMEC, we just awarded those contracts in your last meeting. So I think we're on a cycle of consistently taking it back down to one-twenty over and over and over. So we're not hoarding any money here. I don't believe in that. Okay? Thank you.
Council, additional discussions? Anybody else? So Freeman?
So, I mean, this is not discussion, this is just a point of clarification. So the first item on our agenda is budget. So would, do you want us to move the second item up and vote, vote on tax rate or agree on tax rate?
We have to take the items in that order they are, but you must know what your tax rate's going to be in order to vote on the budget. Because I, I provided you with, under each scenario, some line items need to change so that the budget is accurate. So even though we're not going to take a formal vote, I would almost ask you to take a vote.
Take a vote, just, just so we know.
Or whatever, so that you know. Because then when you make your motion on the budget, that's going to drive what the tax rate must be.
How do we do the straw vote, Susan?
I mean, call for a motion and.
On the tax rate?
Well, I, I think you, you were talking about a straw vote, but the, the actual item on the agenda should be done in the order that you said.
Sure.
The straw vote can just be for purposes of discussion. It's not going to have legal effect and a conversation effect.
It's not an emotional, okay? Council, there are, let me finish this one. Are there any more discussions on this topic? Okay, sounds like there are no more discussion. Are there any thoughts on what rate would you like to propose? Clark, let me start with, I'm not asking for a vote, I'm just asking for opinion. What would be the rate you'll do, sir? Of us, set the tax rate. Okay, Mr. Finch? Mr. Allen?
I like the idea of four-point-five-three.
Point four-five-three, four-point-five, point four-five. Mr. uh, Mr. Freeman?
I also like the idea of point four-five-three.
So we've got two each, we've got point four-five. We've got three.
Four-five-six-seven?
So we've got a problem. I'm on point four-four-nine-three. Additional discussions?
I, I, I would say this, you know, through all the stuff that the mayor discussed, I, I do think that we are in a spot where we could add additional benefits and lower the tax rate. And I realize that it's not significant, right? And you, I, I understand your point. If we're going to lower it, lower it. Well, I mean, by the same token, if we have all these projects that need to get done, why not raise it enough to do it? But that's not where we're at. Where, where we're at is, you know, we are uniquely situated that we have grown, we are getting in more revenue. We had a million more this year. I'm assuming that by the conservative nature of how we do budgets, that we would still have excess next year. And we are in a situation where we could lower the tax rate. Albeit not significantly, albeit not a drastic difference or change in anyone's lives. But we still have the position where we could do it. And while, um, I, you know, the four-five-six-seven, I understand where you guys are at on that. I say if we can do both, we should do both.
Additional discussion, Mr. Allen?
I think what Mr. Freeman said forty-five minutes ago was significant, that we started with zero or two-hundred thousand. So we split and went to four-four-nine-three and a hundred thousand. Then we went back up to four-five-seven, and Mr. Freeman proposed point with four-five-three. So we split the difference between zero and two-hundred twice. Just a point of conversation, that's all.
Additional discussions? Mr. Egan?
I appreciate remember Freeman's comment. But if I understood you correctly, I'm sorry, I'm kind of slow at things. If I understood you correctly, you said that we might be in a better position to lower the tax rate next year as well as being able to do the same this year?
No, I was saying that we're going to be in the same financial situation of having, and, you know, hopefully having an overage of budget.
Okay.
As we've had the last couple of years.
Okay, so, yeah. Makes kind of where I'm, I'm thinking.
Not continually lowering the tax rate.
You know, I've thought about that quite a bit. And I, I've thought about, let's lower it this year. And then I'm, I'm thinking, again, I go back to what I've already said tonight. No one's pounding on the doors. Uh, I know it's a hard stand to take for a lot of politicians. I hate to say that I'm one. I don't like to think of myself as one. And as I said the other night, um, no way I'm, am I in favor of raising taxes, because I know that we tend to get it all worked out in the end and, in what we do and what we spend our money on. If, I, I would like to see another overage. Let, let me put it at your point. I'd like to see another overage at the end of the year, at the end of this budget year. And then next year, we can double the number. Maybe even two-hundred-and-fifty percent of point zero-zero-seven-three-three. Make it a real number. Uh, you know, I, sadly, I didn't have all the DMEC stuff in front of me that I could look at and see what we could have pulled out of red and moved over into yellow with the additional hundred thousand dollars, hundred and ten thousand or two-twenty, depending on which number you want to use. To see what we might could have done. Again, like I said, might not could have done much. Maybe another twenty-five or thirty feet, but, uh, for the sake of time, I'll just say that I'm going to be pretty rigid on the four-five-six-seven. And, uh, if, if, if we feel like we really need to do something, if we, we run into a train wreck next year where all of a sudden we've just got oogles of cash. And I appreciate Town Manager for qualifying the fact that we generally don't have a lot of leftover cash. That we're just sitting there hoarding in CDs or money markets, which don't make any money anyway. Uh, we're not just sitting there hoarding cash. We find things to spend it on. And we find things that are of value to this community that have not been done for many, many years.
Additional comments, Mr. Finch?
I'm going to support point four-five-three-zero. The confidence.
Any additional comments? So I don't have a straw ball, but it sounds like it's a, it's a four-three here. Four-two, maybe I should say, right? Okay, are there additional discussions or we move on to? So surely, let me ask you, do you have the numbers? Look at you, man. So let me, let me make sure that, number one, is this the right motion for that? That's the number two.
Number two.
How about number one? The only thing. Sure, all of the two.
Yes. Yep, I got it right there. Yes, budget motion, number one. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. All right, we're ready for motion.
Oh, one second, I want to make sure the council, additional discussions. Charlie, you have something to say, sir?
Very quickly, I just want to reiterate, I said some time ago, is that I really appreciate the people on this board and the thoughtfulness of all of this. We're only talking about a few dollars one way or the other, but the perspective and what we're doing is to be fair to our citizens. And I could watch that from the Zoom and couldn't speak for the last four weeks. I've got a lot of respect for you guys, and I appreciate you for all of you. Agreed.
Okay. Council, there are no other discussions at this time. There'll be more time for discussions. On item number one, can I have a motion, please?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item one as presented with the following changes. I'd like to adjust the tax rate to point four-five-three-zero, uh, which will create revenues of property taxes under eleven-dash-five-one-one-one of four million six-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-two dollars with an effective M and O rate of point three-two-one-one-nine-zero. Also, it will change the expenses under town council projects under six-one-zero-dash-six-seven-zero-nine to one-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars for council identified projects.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman.
Second.
Seconded by Eldridge. Everyone heard the motion. Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify? All opposed? Oh, sorry, Rachel, I'm so sorry. Rachel asked me to make a record vote. Counselor, my apologies for that. Motion made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Eldridge. So it's a record vote, and I'm going to call one at a time. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Finch?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Eldridge? Mr. Egan?
Yes. Excuse me, no.
I'm, I'm already confused.
And Mayor, I have a comment, like, once that's.
I want to, I think, yeah, we'll come back to the second item. Mr. George, yes. So in favor, Clark, Finch, Allen, Freeman, Eldridge, and George, opposed to Mr. Egan. Moving on to item number two, that be okay or, or?
Just, just, it pertains to item number one, and just real quickly.
Yes, sir.
I'm not against what we have in the budget. I'm against the right that we apply the, against the budget.
Moving on to item number two, discuss, consider and act upon the second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-one. Say it's second reading. Okay, all right.
Oh, dear, this is second.
I'm on September sixteenth, Linda. Now what? You are right. I am so sorry. My apologies, my apologies. No, no, no. I, my, no, it's, 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 it's my. One, begin. Do you really have to say? No, ma'am, no, ma'am, right. No, 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 I, I messed that up. Sorry, I've been going through. Thank you, Susan, for keeping me straight. And number two, discuss, consider and act upon the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-one of the town council of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas. Ratifying a tax rate of one.
I'm sorry, I think you can say it like it's on the agenda, and then again, in your motion, change it to point four-five-three-zero.
Okay. Are the Texas ratifying a tax rate of point four-five-six-seven. Ms. Shuri?
Are you going with point four-five-six-seven or point four-five-three-zero?
Yeah, I, I would just ask.
Yeah, there's.
Okay, I want to, public comments, though, right? Shuri, if you have no comments from the staff side, let me open up for public comments. If there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the, I'm sorry, no one is coming forward in the chamber. Eric, anyone raising their hands?
No, sir.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, are there any discussions on item number two? Again, this is going to be a record vote, I'm going to call for a motion. Can I have a motion through spread item number two?
A motion moved that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption.
A motion move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption, nope.
What's number two? Of the plug, oh, okay. Okay. And I have a motion with respect to number two, thank you, Rachel, for keeping us straight again.
Make a motion to accept ordinance twenty one twenty one with a change of the effective tax rate of point four five three zero.
I'm sorry, Mr. Eld, is it effective tax rate or tax rate?
Ratifying a tax rate. Sorry, excuse me, so approving ordinance twenty twenty one of the Town Council of Sunnyvale, Texas, ratifying a tax rate of point four five three zero.
Motion made by Mr. Eldridge. Seconded by Allen to approve ordinance twenty one dash twenty one. Of the Town of, Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas. Ratifying a tax rate of point four five three zero. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? So let me change the direction, Mr. Egan?
No.
Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Finch?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
I'm over, yes, now.
What?
Yes.
Uh, George is voting no, so, or motion in favor? Clark. Finch. Allen. Freeman and Eldridge. Voting nay, Egan and George. Moving on to item number three. Discuss, consider and act upon the first reading of ordinance. Twenty one dash twenty two of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas. Providing for the levying of property taxes for tax year twenty twenty one. And enacting provisions relating to this subject and purpose of this ordinance, Shuri?
Um, I don't have anything else to add, but you should have the motion in front of you of what you're required to say.
Yes, ma'am, we do. Let me open up for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber, Erica, anyone raising their hand?
No, sir.
No hands raised, I'm going to close the public comments, council, are there any discussions on item number three? If not, can I have a motion with respect to item number three, please?
A move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point four five three zero, which is effectively a three point four three. Sorry, three point four three percent increase in the tax rate.
Motion made by Eldridge. Seconded by Mr. Allen.
Excuse me. Do you have the entire amount when you do, uh, say about the point three two one with, you have. Uh, motion about the M and O and the debt that should be included in there?
That's, it's just wait for Shur to come back and find me.
A move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point four five three zero, which is effectively a three point four three percent increase in the tax rate. And of that, point three two one one nine is levied for maintenance and operations of the town. And point one three one eight one of the tax rate is specifically levied for debt service.
I'm not going to repeat that, Mr. Eldridge, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Eldridge, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion?
Their point, would we have motion in the second before we terminate that? It corrected? Yes, sir. I was in my second, if we need, if we need to correct that.
I'm going to leave to a Tony for that.
Careful with this, and again, this is one of the more important items that you wrote on all year. Then you should dispose of the first and do the second. Uh, dispose of the first motion and second.
Listen, I'm sorry, I missed it, say it one more time, sir.
The first motion and second should be disposed of, and then you should approach the second motion.
Okay.
In second. If, if they could rescind it, that would be fine.
I withdraw my previous motion. And I'll draw the second to that motion.
Okay, the, all right. So we already made a second, first and second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Eldridge, seconded by Freeman. Again, this is a record word, let me do it on the other side now, turn the direction, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Finch?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Mr. Egan?
I apologize, Mayor, let me think about this for a second.
Take a time.
This is actually just approving the tax. The levying of the tax, correct? Has nothing to do with the rate to speak, I mean, it does, but it doesn't. Uh, yes.
George?
Yes.
Mr. Clark, Mr. Finch, Mr. Allen, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Eldridge, Mr. Egan, Mr. George, all in favor of, all in favor, what are they, yes? And no one, no. No names on this one. Okay. I don't know, I forgot it was something else. Okay, okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion made by Freeman, seconded by Eldridge, all in favor, signify? All opposed, motion passed, seven oh. Time is eight fifty seven, and the meeting is adjourned. I want to thank us for being here, staff, Shuri. Phyllis, Gretchen. Since they're not, and Susan, everybody for assisting council, thanks for your.
Thanks, Isa, I appreciate you being here.